Good afternoon, everyone. We are calling this board meeting June 26th of the Richmond School District Two Board of Trustees to order. And at this time, we're going to have the invocation and pledge of allegiance by Tyler Gadsden from Catawba Trail Elementary. And as Tyler comes, I'd like to ask you, if you would, before he begins, we'll stand, and ask you to remember the family of one of our Rice Creek students, Ms. Aaliyah Haynes, who lost her battle with cancer. You probably remember, there was a bone marrow drive for her, and we publicized that, and unfortunately, Aaliyah lost her battle. So we wanted to remember her family in our thoughts and prayers during this time. At this time, we'll stand.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, thank you for helping all the students, our teachers, our school Catawba Trail, and our community. Please be with our Board of Trustees tonight and give them the courage and strength to make decisions for the good of all of Richmond Two. And finally, dear Lord, please help us to always seek your will in all that we do and say. In Jesus' name, we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and the visible liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you very much, Tyler. You did an excellent job. Thank you very much for that. Again, I want to welcome everyone to our board meeting this afternoon. We are being joined today via Skype by board member, Mr. James Manning, who's out of town, but who's able to be able to be with us as a result of technology. And we certainly want to thank our technology department and the work they were able to do to allow that to happen on tonight. Also, we, in an effort to continue our move towards transparency, I wanted to make you aware that tonight's board meeting will be the first board meeting that will be recorded and aired later on R2 TV for our citizens in the community to be able to view our board meetings. So we certainly want to again thank our communication department for that effort as well. We look forward to community members being more informed as a result of the opportunities that they will be given to view our board meetings. And finally, we want to extend our heartfelt concerns and thoughts and prayers, as I mentioned earlier, to the family of Ms. Aaliyah Haynes, who passed away just recently. Funeral services will be on tomorrow. Our board member, Ms. Melinda Anderson, as many of you know, was ill and was in the hospital. She's home and recuperating and doing better. However, Ms. Anderson asked that we excuse her tonight so that she could continue to regain her strength and be able to hopefully rejoin our board and our board meetings and our meeting in July. So with no further announcements or updates, we will chair and entertain a motion to approve the current agenda and minutes from our previous board meeting.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve our current agenda and our minutes from our previous board meeting.
It's been moved by Dr. Burgess, seconded by Ms. Spector. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote. Vote passes seven to nothing. Thank you very much. At this time, we'll have our student focus. Dr. Brochu.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. At this time, I will call on our chief academic officer, Sue Mallett, to introduce our student focus for this meeting.
Okay, great. Thank you, Dr. Brochu. Tonight, we're pleased to have two students who are graduates of Catawba Trail, Elizabeth and Eric Whitlow, will be coming, if they'll come up to the podium. They just finished their first year here, and I think they have a video they're going to share. And so you're going to find out what it was like, from their perspective, to open a new school, okay? Thank you.
Welcome to Catawba Trail Elementary School, where there are many paths to the future. I'm Elizabeth Whitlow, and I'm a part of the first fifth grade graduating class.
Hello, and I'm Eric Whitlow, and I am also part of the first fifth grade graduating class. We had a fantastic year. We would like to share all we have accomplished in nine short months. Please look at the screen. My favorite part of being in the first graduating class at Catawba Trail Elementary School was getting to take part in the time capsule by collecting items to put in the time capsule. My favorite memory was getting to release the butterflies.
My favorite part of being in the first graduating class of CTE is getting to experience the technology in the classrooms firsthand. Also, that we got to have the very first promotion of CTE. We also got to help in the vote for our school mascot and colors, which are the Colts and blue and yellow. Being a part of opening a new school was very special, too. It was special because we got to choose a mascot by student election. We also got to go to and be a part of the school dedication. Opening a new school lets you start over fresh with new teachers and students. Now, it is my pleasure to introduce our principal, Ms. Denise Barth.
We often say it's a great day to be on the trail. It's been a great year on the trail. Last year's theme was "If I Never Forever Endeavor," and the board members might have seen those books in the closed session. It's about risk-taking, and this year was all about taking those risks and being willing to fail so that we could succeed sooner. This coming year, we're going to be focusing on fitness. And so I have a very special request that I'd like to make of the executive staff as well as the board members. You may have noticed as you came in, by our playground, we've now installed a one-quarter-mile walking track. Thank you, district. That makes us very happy. We are applying for a grant that will allow us to put fitness stations at each of the intersections of the track. And one of the things that this group does, as they say, if you would have a letter, include board member's signatures if they're willing to sign. This is the letter that we take out to the community and to businesses and ask them if they would sponsor one of those corner fitness stations. And so again, it's always a great day on the trail. It's going to be a healthy and fit day on the trail, always. Thank you for being here tonight and for enjoying our incredible Colts. And I do have a letter in my hand, and I'd be happy to walk it up.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Barth. At this time, we are, we have our public participation session. No one has signed up to speak to the board, however, if there's anyone in the audience who would care to address the board at this time, please feel free to come to the mic, state your name and your address, and share whatever thoughts you may have with the board. Seeing none, thank you very much. Next on our agenda is our facilities report. Dr. Brochu.
Yes, Mr. Jackson, I would like to call on Mr. Jack Carter, our executive director for operations, to please share information with you regarding our facilities.
Ladies and gentlemen, you have this week's report. We'll be glad to answer any questions. A couple of updates. We did get full occupancy of Westwood High School. We all but had it last Monday, but paperwork had to catch up with us. We finally got the paperwork Friday morning. Furniture's nearly done. Place looks great. If you've ridden by Ridgeview, you notice the portables are still there. It turns out, some of our old Ford Jackson portables had a little bit of asbestos in the roof, so we have to abate those before we can move in them. So we're just waiting on some final permits so we can get those abated. Those are going to be destroyed, so they're not, the asbestos is not dangerous. You have to ground it up and snort it through a straw before it hurts you, so.
Questions or comments on the board? Hearing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Carter.
Yes.
Groundbreaking for 19. Have y'all thought about that yet?
The groundbreaking ceremony, that's really in Ken's department.
Oh, it is? Yeah, okay, thank you. I'll ask him.
I don't want to throw him under the bus, but they scheduled it.
Let's do that. While we're here, let's do that. That's fine.
That might have been news to him, I'm not sure.
Good question, gentlemen.
I'd like to be able to attend, so, I mean, that's always been my problem. Depending where you have it.
So Friday's right.
Friday, yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is our technology report. Dr. Brochu.
Yes, I would like to call on Tom Kramer, our executive director for technology, to share the report.
Thank you, Dr. Brochu. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, you each have tonight's technology report. I'd be happy to address any questions you might have at this time.
Questions or comments from the board on the technology report?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Manning.
Tom, as far as the SharePoint implementation, when will we actually see that go up on the main site?
We have some work going on right now. We're shooting for July timeframe to be able to get that out, and we expect to be able to do that sometime during the month of July, once the final adjustments are made to it. We've had a-
Does that include the mobile readiness that I've been looking or asking to have implemented? Is that part of that?
The initial, the initial part of it will not have a true mobile device part of it, but you'll still be able to view the webpage through typical iPhones or Android through a regular web browser, but it won't have a mobile app built for it at this time on the initial rollout.
On the VDI, virtual desktop infrastructure, I see that you have the second cluster getting ready to come online. How many schools or devices, or I don't know how you want to give me a measurement of how much is that in use in our schools at this time?
Well, we began rolling it out before school, in the springtime, and it's currently geared up to handle 4,000 consecutive virtual desktop sessions on there. And as the demand grows, we have the ability to add hardware and infrastructure to it to be able to increase that up to meet the demand as it grows. We did some initial testing with it and some, actually did standardized student testing with it, and we'll probably get a better gauge of the usage of it when school resumes in August.
So are we using that in any one-to-one environments, or primarily you're using it on the computers currently in the district?
It's being used in one-to-one. It's, any device that you access it with will be able to access a virtual desktop. Here at Catawba Trail, it was used in the one-to-one classrooms here at the school, and they were one of the initial, early users of the VDI here at Catawba Trail. So it's available to one-to-one, certainly.
Okay, it's been pretty smooth implementation, no major road bumps?
It's been smooth. I would characterize it as smooth. It's very seamless, it's very slick, the way it works. The users are very familiar, once we, they start up the session and have a traditional Windows environment available to them on their one-to-one computing device, Chromebooks and PCs and that sort of thing.
Okay, thank you.
Tom, on the Westwood installation, no anticipated delays expected. Was that beginning on time and schedule starting next week?
Yes, sir. We have a lot of installations done as far as infrastructure, network, voice, video, data. And during July, we'll begin placing the instructional computers in the school, and we expect to be ready to go with plenty of, plenty of time to address any unforeseen problems before school starts.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Brill.
I just want to congratulate you on all the work you've been doing, loading all the past minutes and agendas onto the Board Doc system. It says dating back to 2006.
Yeah, it dates back to May 16, 2006, was the first board meeting where you all went electronic. So thanks to our team that's working on it, they were able to bring the past documents, past minutes on, so.
Congratulations.
Well, thank you very much.
Good job.
Other questions or comments from the board? Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is a budget update. Dr. Brochu.
Yes, I'd like to call on chief financial officer, Bob Davis, to update the board regarding the budget.
Thank you, Dr. Brochu. Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board, the conference committee of the legislature, the House and Senate members are still at loggerheads. The fundamental question, if you've been following, published in newspapers and on the news, is that there's a question over a tax break for businesses. It's not really an education-related item, that's the sticking point. As of midday today, they were still at the loggerhead. Hopefully, they will resolve that, and hopefully we'll have a bill to go to the governor. The governor does have five days to sign it, so we could well be past June 30th for it. And accordingly, both houses have introduced a continuing resolution that they could enact to continue state government without having to force a shutdown of state government effective July 1st, without an appropriation bill passed. And I'll have some more comments on that, Mr. Chairman, if I may, when we discuss the budget, the general fund budget for next year.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Any questions or comments from the board to Ms. Davis?
Thank you.
Hearing none, thank you very much. Next, we will vote on the items discussed during the executive session, student expulsion, student appeals, student readmission requests, some as well as the DOD education program. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I don't have any motions for the expulsions.
Yes, sir.
But on the appeals, on student number one, I'd like to make a motion that we uphold that student's appeal and let him apply to Westwood Academy. Number two, uphold the appeal. That student, I believe, will be graduating. And number, student number three, to deny the appeal.
I second it.
It's been moved by Dr. Burgess, seconded by Ms. Brill. Is any further, are there any further discussion among the board members? Hearing none, we're ready to vote.
Ms. Brill.
Ms. Brill, second.
Mr. Chairman, I haven't seen my, there it is, nevermind.
Yes, sir.
I knew it did.
Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you very much. Student readmission requests for the summer and fall?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to readmit students number one through 14. On number, student number 15, the student's option is to go to adult ed.
Second it.
It's been moved by Dr. Burgess and seconded by Ms. Brill. Any further discussion from the board? Hearing none, we are ready to vote. The motion passes seven to zero. Thank you very much. Student admission request into the district adult education program. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, so moved, I believe this one student involved.
That's correct. It's been moved by Dr. Fleming, is it second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Spector. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote. Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you very much. Let me apologize, I'm saying seven, it's actually six, because Ms. Anderson is not here, and all of the former motions as well, it'd be six to zero. Ratification of personnel, Dr. Brochu.
Yes, I will call upon our chief human resource officer, Roosevelt Garrick.
Mr. Chair, ladies and gentlemen of the board, for your consideration, we have five pages of professional recommendations, one page of professional releases, two pages of classified recommendations, three pages of classified releases, two pages of in-district transfers, and one addenda.
Chair, any more motion?
Accept whatever.
It's been moved by Ms. Spector, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Fleming. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote. Motion passes six to zero. Thank you very much. Under old business action requested, approval of the fiscal year 2012, 2013 general fund budget. However, we have voted on and approved the budget as presented before, so there's no action. Mr. Davis.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, Mr. Davis.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board, you'll recall that back on May 10th, actually, you approved the budget for next year, 1213. And you recall that your last meeting on June 12th, based on the Senate version of the appropriation bill, we presented a revised budget to you.
That's correct.
Tonight, we're actually presenting to you and requesting your approval of that June 12th budget, based on the Senate version. The caution to you is, of course, that we still don't have a final appropriation bill, and we could be well faced with a continuing resolution, at least for a temporary period of time, hopefully a short period of time. The other factor you need to realize is that this budget does contain, as you'll recall, an increase in salaries of a 2% pay raise, plus a step for all of our staff. If the Senate, or if the conference committee does not adopt an appropriation bill that the governor signs, we would have a continuing resolution. And if that's the case, hopefully that matter would be resolved before July 8th. Why July 8th? July 8th is the date that we will need to finalize our payroll, we're going to pay on July 15th. And accordingly, if it's not resolved by July 8th, we would in fact continue to pay the salaries as we're paying them right now in the current fiscal year. Hopefully, the matter will be resolved. Hopefully, the matter will reflect what is in this budget we're asking you to approve tonight, that does have a 2% pay raise and a step, sir. So tonight, we are asking the board to approve this budget as presented of $215 million, $216,345, which is an increase over the current year's budget to provide for the opening of Westwood High School and the other items that we have in the budget.
Discussion by the board, Dr. Fleming.
I have a question. Didn't we already approve the 2% raise in our, the original, in May?
Yes, the 2% was in the original budget. The 2% plus the step was added by the Senate.
But it hasn't been added yet.
Correct.
I mean, this board has, again, as of last, like last week, we're having trouble, as I am, as a board member, to vote on something that I, is, I'm not sure is going to happen, you know, like voting for future, like the future here. But we've already voted for the pay raise, so that should be already in the budget, right? Right? Am I right?
That's correct.
That is correct. The 2% increase is, but not plus a step. That is additional funds required to add the step on top of the 2%.
But we don't have the funds to do that now. We don't have the funds to do the 2%. Or do we have the funds to do it?
We don't have the funds to do the 2%.
So that's, even as the continuing resolution passes-
We wouldn't have the funds to do it.
Okay. Okay, well.
The point, for the board's information, the point is that, Dr. Fleming, as you mentioned just before the meeting, the current base student cost, and Dr. Burgess always looks at that number, is $1,880 in the current fiscal year. You recall that under the House version of the appropriation bill and the Senate version of the appropriation bill, it's increased from 1,880 to 2,012, which did provide the dollars for the 2%. And the Senate had that other additional funding, provided by the Board of Economic Advisors, after the House had completed its deliberations. So the Senate added a step on top of it.
But did they add more funds?
Yes, they did.
That's reasonable, okay. They added more funds.
They added additional funding. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair.
But since-
Yes, Mr. Manning.
Mr. Davis, is there any harm in us waiting to pass the revised budget until the Senate and House have completed their budgeting process? Wouldn't it be possible for us to make retroactive, any pay changes or other things that would be implemented by the revisions in the budget?
Mr. Manning, that is an option. What we're proposing to you, though, is, if you will, the flip side of that. We're asking the board to approve the budget that we presented, and we're thinking that the great, the great probability is that this budget will be supported and funded by the final act of the legislature. Again, should they not do that, our fallback position would be to, if a continuing resolution's in place, to not grant the pay raise and keep our budget where it currently is. So we're asking that this budget be approved by the board, if you will, contingent on the final approval of the legislature, but before we execute it. If they don't give us final approval, we won't execute it.
Ms. Spector.
Mr. Chair, can we not table this until the next board meeting? I don't feel comfortable voting on something when we're not, we don't even know that we're going to get the funds.
You certainly can make a motion then, Spector.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that the budget's tabled until the next board meeting in July to be voted on.
Is there a second?
I don't-
Second.
Second, now we go into discussion.
There is no discussion on tabling, but, but I'm not sure we need-
Go ahead, Dr. Fleming.
Well, if we table it, then I'm not sure we can discuss this. I think we still need to discuss this.
Okay.
I mean, Spector, I'd like to discuss this more, and you're tabling. If we do the table, then it's over.
So how can we-
Just let us discuss. There's no motion on the board.
Right. I think, and I really, I think what Ms. Spector is asking is that we not vote on the revision tonight.
I agree with that. But I don't mind actually voting on the agreement, I just can't vote to hire more people. Okay, I cannot vote to hire any more people, basically, and that's in this, that's in this budget. You see what I'm saying? I cannot, on a promise, that we don't know what's going to happen.
I do, but, and I'll defer to Mr. Garrick and our HR folks. They have been working based on the budget that was approved by our board on May 10th, which did have additional funding for positions. So we are in the process of recruiting those folks. And Ms. Garrick, bail me out.
That's correct.
So the fiscal reality of the matter is, we are proceeding with these positions in the full expectation that the legislature will-
I thought the only additional in this new budget was the 19 positions.
We don't bring them on board till July 1st, Dr. Fleming, but they are recruiting and signing people. So, Mr. Garrick, is that-
You're right.
No, I need that we are hiring more people than we had for other positions, but this was a new situation, and that's something that I'm really not comfortable with doing. and that's something that I'm really not comfortable with doing, not knowing at this point.
There, there is a, and Ms. Garrick, help me out with this, there is a non-appropriation clause if in the contracts. If funds were not there by act of state government, we would void those new people we hired and say, sorry, go away, I guess. Ms. Garrick, can I miss something?
It is in the contract.
Then let me, then let me, I'm sorry, I hate to take the conversation. Then I'm not comfortable with hiring 19 people between now and the time school starts, getting room swarm in schools and putting a program in.
And you're talking about the foreign language?
I'm talking about the foreign language.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Manning.
Mr. Chairman, I, I think that, I can agree with Dr. Fleming's assessment that should we move forward with the revisions, that it may be difficult to implement a full-scale foreign language by the beginning of the year. However, you know, I'd like to not just table the whole discussion of foreign language. Because of that, couldn't we consider hoax December break implementation of foreign language to come in after the Christmas holidays? That would cut back on some of the necessary spending, give HR, give the schools time to implement this in a meaningful way and still make progress in that area. So I don't want to table the whole discussion of foreign language, but I agree with Ms. Specter that I don't think we should vote on the, on expenditures, which is what this is asking us to do until we know we have the funds.
Thank you, Ms. Manning. Further discussions, comments from the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Dr. Burgess?
Mr. Davis, clarify for me.
Yes, ma'am.
Clear this up. Base student cost by continuing resolution is 1,880.
1,880, that's correct.
Base student cost by tonight's budget is?
2,012.
Well, okay. Well, I, I think I'm probably in agreement with Ms. Specter that we don't vote on that budget tonight, that we really wait to see what the Senate does. I know that y'all are in the throes of trying to recruit people, but I really don't feel comfortable spending money that we don't have or that we don't know anything about yet. So I'd like for us to perhaps, is that a problem to wait until July?
If, if you're asking, can we do that, the answer is yes, we can do that. Is it a challenge for my payroll department? Clearly, they're working, they're walking two roads, Lordy, right now, assuming the funding is there and assuming that the funding is not there. So we are juggling that, and I'm, I'm thinking of my payroll folks who I'm thinking of here, folks, in all candor.
And, and then my other option for you, Mr. Chair, I mean, if perchance the budget was passed by the legislature next week, could you call a special meeting? We could act on it immediately and quickly.
With the budget being the one agenda item?
Right, that that would be the only item? Could we even do that that way? Rather than make a decision tonight? Could that be an option that we might be able to do?
Certainly, the pleasure of the board. Dr. Burgess? Other questions, the comments on the board?
Yeah, our, our, the budget that we have voted on already already has a step of faith that we're going to 2,000.
That's correct.
Right.
Okay, so I mean, we've already stepped out anyway. I agree with James and Barbara at this point, and I'm sure with you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman, it does come back. Can, can we have the district amend the expenditures for foreign language to include a half a year program starting after December? Or have the discussion at least with the, with Ms. Mallett and others? I, I think it may be more feasible to do that, and I don't, you know, I want to have that kind of settled as we move into that final vote on this.
Absolutely, Mr. Manning. Mr. Davis?
Mr. Chair, ladies and gentlemen of the board, is it the board's intent to go with the May 10th budget that was approved by the board and just not the additional funding that was recommended or proposed to the board on June 12th?
That would be my.
Is that your intent?
That would be my support at this.
I hear consensus of the board, Mr. Davis.
We, Mr. Chairman, we can execute that. We would come back to you subsequently for the additional funding if it, if it arose.
And Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Specter.
I'm not against foreign language, but I still haven't gotten the information I requested at the last board meeting why we took foreign language out of District 2 to start with. And I know it was because of budget cut. This shows right here, we're back in a budget cut. So why do we want to put something back in when we can use money in other places right now? I, I just can't see right now it's the time to bring in a new.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Another.
Hold on a second, Ms. Manning. Ms. Manning, hold on a second. Ms. Specter's finishing up. Go ahead, Ms. Specter.
I just can't see bringing in another program right now in our district until we can get these issues taken care of.
Mr. Manning.
Budget cuts.
Mr. Chair, I'm unclear as to the issues that Ms. Specter's talking about. We, we have expanded early childhood education, which is an additional funding that we set forth this year. We, we are looking to do a 2% raise for our staff again another year. We've done, we're looking to do step increases for staff. We've increased the number of teachers per our student teacher ratios and other things. We, we have expanded the budget above and beyond. It was my understanding we cut foreign language simply because we were decreasing the student-based costs. We've adjusted, we've gotten rid of positions within the district that are free to funding. We, we have fewer AAs and other positions that we've consolidated. This is ongoing funding, not one-time funding that we're looking at. And so, and, and so I'm very unclear as to what programs are being stymied in the district that foreign language would be taking the place of.
And I think, Mr. Manning, what you've requested, and I think what Ms. Specter is responding to is what we hopefully will, hopefully will happen at that next meeting. That is a discussion specifically of this topic, this issue. You've asked for that. You expressed your reasons for it. Ms. Specter has expressed her concerns or cautions, and I think we will proceed with where we are in terms of tabling the vote on the budget tonight with that item being an item of discussion at the meeting which bring, when we bring back the budget.
And if we do foreign language for the half year, that would free up half of that money for this year if we need to look at it for other expenses.
Mr. Chair, at this time, I would like to make a motion to table this budget.
Yes, and the motion is moved by Ms. Specter to table the discussion of the budget, vote on the budget tonight. Is there a second?
Second.
No, Dr. Fleming, second. We're ready to vote.
Mr. Chairman, we're voting to delay the vote or table the vote.
That's correct. Table the, exactly.
Yeah, yeah.
That motion passes six to zero? Oh, you haven't done it yet, I'm sorry.
Ms. Specter, would you accept a friendly amendment that in the event that we get information regarding the budget that Mr. Chairman can call a special call meeting for that one agenda item? Would you?
I don't think we need a special meeting.
Well, it might. To vote on that revised budget?
If the Senate settles the budget, we will have to vote on it, the one that we're tabling now. If we don't, if we don't, if we want to do it before July 17th is what she's suggesting. If it happens next week, for example.
Would you accept that?
The only point I'd make is that if the Conference Committee agreed tomorrow morning, it would go to the governor. The governor has five days by state statute. So that would be July 2nd before the governor would have, would have, would be required to approve the appropriation bill. It's the only point I would make. It could be July 3rd before we know.
Well, I'm just trying to give us some flexibility.
Dr. Burgess is trying to move it on before July 17th.
If that could happen. That way, it might make HR life a little bit easier.
Yes, it would.
Mr. Chairman, I voted no on that last.
It hadn't come up yet.
I would accept it, but I would like just to have one meeting in July as normal, so if we could just have our next meeting.
Right, this would not replace our July 17th meeting.
It would be the one agenda item. We come, vote, leave.
Okay, so Jill, the amended motion then? Yes, yes. I didn't hear you, Jill. That if, in fact, the vote by the, by the General Assembly occurs before our next board meeting, we'll have a called board meeting with one agenda item being the revised budget.
For a vote.
For a vote.
And that still would take place on Tuesday night, right?
We'll, I'll poll the board members and see what's convenient, respect, whatever works best for everyone. Okay.
Mine hadn't even come up.
Mine did.
You can? That'd be great.
Uh, Ms. Brill indicated her vote was no. Okay. Yeah, you, you voted no to table it. You want to continue discussion tonight?
Um, just did not want to table it, that's all.
The only option if you don't table is to vote on it tonight. Only two options, either to vote on it or not to vote on it.
Well, then I wanted to vote on it tonight.
Motion passes five to one. Thank you very much. Next agenda item is the approval of the advanced refunding of the bonds. Dr. Broschew?
Yes, Mr. Davis has some information regarding that.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, again, before you tonight is a permissive resolution authorizing administration to sell bonds, primarily dependent upon market conditions. We, we do have some other factors that could impact the timing of it. We're looking at those. Our bond council's advising us, but again, this is just a permissive resolution authorizing us to move if conditions merit.
Move approval, Mr. Chair.
Moved by Ms. Brill. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Burgess. Any further discussion by the board? Hearing none, we're ready to vote.
I do. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Dr. Burgess.
Can I just say that the person who described this last time, I can't remember who made this statement, but it's a lot like refinancing your mortgage, getting a better rate. Is that correct?
That's correct.
That's correct. Thank you, Dr. Burgess. Motion passes six to zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item is district branding. Dr. Broschew?
Last meeting, you may recall, we heard a presentation from Ken Blackstone, our Executive Director for Communications and Strategic Partnerships, and this evening he's here to answer any questions that you might have regarding the district branding.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members, and Dr. Broschew and staff. Appreciate the opportunity, and we streamlined the different iterations per your request last time. We have a slide here with the logo with this, it's the single logo just with two orientations, a portrait and landscape, just to have that option for the various media we might use it on. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. We're seeking your approval to proceed with our district branding efforts to include the adoption of the new logo.
Questions, comments from the board?
Mr. Chair, I made that we go ahead and accept the changes on the branding.
Removed by Ms. Specter. Is there a second? Second by Dr. Fleming. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote. Motion passes six to zero. Thank you very much. Under old business, no action requested, regulations, the two that are listed. Dr. Broschew?
Yes, I'm going to call on our Chief Information Officer, Debbie Hamm, to share information regarding these regulations.
We currently have a regulation IJND that deals with the acceptable use of technology on the part of our students, our faculty, other employees, as well as visitors, and anyone who would be accessing our networks. And we're recommending a change in those regulations to, first of all, separate out the information for students, because we ask students to sign off on that. By pulling out the students section, they can more easily see what applies to them, don't have to read through things that apply to other people. And then the second significant change in these regulations is the allowing students to bring their own personal electronic devices to schools. Even at elementary school, we get requests to be able to bring e-readers and things like that. And at the high school to allow students to include cell phones among those electronic communication devices. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Questions or comments from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I gave my comments to Dr. Hamm already, but.
I have those.
You have those? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Burgess. Any other questions or comments from the board? Thank you very much, Dr. Hamm. Agenda items for our next meeting. Dr. Broschew?
Yes, sir, we have three items already for our meeting that will take place in July. Staff and faculty focus report, legislative update, and budget update.
Are there any additional items from the board you'd like to see added to the next board meeting, July 17th at Polo Road?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Manning?
At the last meeting, Dr. Fleming had asked about, looked into our magnet programs and special programs to see which ones may be expanded or increased. Dr. Broschew, do you have a feeling of when that may come back up for us again?
We will send that information as soon as it's completed being compiled.
Do you have an idea about how long that may take?
We hope to have it by the end of this week.
Okay, so if we have it in time, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add that. If not, we'll move it to the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Manning. So noted.
Um, Mr. Chair, I also would like to add to the agenda, and it doesn't have to be for the next board meeting, because I know it's going to take a while. But I'd like us to go back as a board and go over the study and start looking at things that we need to go ahead and move forward on along with, we need to finalize Dr. Broschew's, Dr. Broschew's information as well. Or is that still going to take place in August? To review contract and goals?
The goals of the superintendent and the board you're referring to?
Mm-hmm. Is that still in August?
Mm-hmm. Other items to be added to the next board meeting or any future board meeting? Thank you, Ms. Specter. Board meeting agenda items?
Mr. Chairman?
Dr. Burgess?
Can I just clarify, um, the board superintendent goals and the super and the board goals? Would we do that in a separate meeting like we've done before, or would we do that here?
The last, the one that was done last year, Dr. Burgess, was a separate meeting for that specific purpose.
So we would do that as a separate meeting? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Broschew, the winter break data, was that, and, and Dr. Hamm, was that scheduled for the July meeting?
The report card information?
No, the winter break data.
The winter break data?
Yes, ma'am.
I, I think that we'll have that data for you with the exception of the achievement data, which will still be embargoed and not complete at that point in time. And we have good information to bring to you. I don't see why we can't bring that, what we have to you in July. Getting the signal from Jeff. He says yes. He's been working on it steadily.
And that's separate from the test score the next quarter? Is that also scheduled for?
The, the test score information I'm anticipating we'll bring to you in August, and that's because of the embargoes.
That's fine. That's fine. In case folks are wondering, we, we remember we delayed the vote on the calendar until we received the information regarding the feedback from our, our community on the previous winter break. And that data will be helpful in helping the board to determine prior to the presentation of the calendar for 2013, the next calendar, in terms of how the previous winter break failed in our schools and attendance, discipline, performance, et cetera. Thank you very much. Any other items from the board to be added to next board meeting's agenda or any future board meeting's agenda?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chair, last.
Ms. Manning?
Last thing, the, the studies that were mentioned last week, salary and the climate studies.
Yes, sir.
Moving forward, will they be ready for any action next meeting?
Dr. Broschew?
We've been discussing that and reviewing and studying possibilities on the climate study, and I know that Dr. Hamm and Jeff Potts have been finalizing some of that study information.
I'm confident on the climate study. We'll have some information to bring to you about sort of a proposal for how to proceed with doing it, and for you to look at the general outline of the content, and with your approval, we'll move forward with that.
And as far as the salary study, in talking with Mr. Garrick, we have some data already that has been comprised, and I'll ask him to share that with you.
Mr. Manning, ladies and gentlemen of the board, we have some information as far as 1112 salary study. We'll include that in your board brief for your July 17th meeting, let you look over that, and then after you look over that, we'll take direction, whether. uh, whether you want us to go further.
It will be added to the-
What does that mean? I, I don't understand what level 12 means.
Repeat your statement, Ms. Manning?
Uh, uh, Mr. Garrick, is it level 12 information?
Eleven, uh, 2011-12, the new year.
I got you, okay, calendar year, I'm sorry, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garrick. Dr. Brochure, any other items from the board?
Mr. Chair?
Dr. Burgess?
One question. The information that was presented by Mr. Foster at the last meeting about the curriculum, is that something we have to act on? Remember all those curriculum changes that will be implemented?
The Common Core.
The Common Core, is that something we have to act on, or?
No, that's something that we're beginning and continuing to do.
A lot of that, it seemed like we, was already in progress.
Yes, it is, yes, yeah.
Okay, but that's not something we have to officially act on. That was a pretty comprehensive document.
It is. But we're, I think we're in very good shape.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Burgess. Other, Ms. Specter?
Mr. Chair, on the salaries?
Mm-hmm.
Can we have two readings before we vote, because until we know we're getting the funding, that's too close without hearing the report and knowing we've got the funding.
I think, Mr. Manning, clarify, if I'm understanding you correctly, I think you're simply asking for sort of, sort of a study of historical, um, appropriation of funds and salaries and categories throughout the district, uh, not necess-
That's correct. I'm not actually, I'm not asking for action at this time, it's a study to see where we are.
Right.
There may be action that we decide to take from that study, but there's no action requested at this time.
Okay, thank you.
You want, you want comparisons to our surrounding districts?
That's correct, for, for everybody, not just teachers, but all staff.
Right.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Specter, thank you, Ms. Manning. Any further agenda items for the next board meeting or future board meetings? Hearing none, thank you very much. Next on our agenda for tonight is our second public participation session. Again, no one has signed up for the first or the second public participation, however, if there is anyone in the audience who would like to address the board, feel free to do so at this time, come up to the microphone, state your name and address, and share your thoughts with us. Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is our board and superintendent comments. Dr. Burgess?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Want to thank Ms. Barth and her, um, folks for having us out, school looks great, and the young man did a super job of calling the meeting together and doing our invocations, so please tell him thank you. And the two young folks that presented on behalf of the school, they were great, too. Are they twins?
They are.
Okay. They did a great job, tell them thank you. Um, I want to thank you all for the, um, report on the work week, Monday through Thursday. Appreciate that information, I know we do that where we are, and just kind of gives everybody a little morale booster during the summer, before they come back to the grind in fall. Um, and also, are we open, or is the school district closed during the week of July 4th?
We are open except for the 4th.
Okay. And then, um, I hope everybody has a safe summer, and hope y'all can get some time off and enjoy your vacation. I'm going to take as much as I can. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Burgess. Ms. Brill?
Um, thank you, Denise, for your hospitality, it's great to be on the trail, and I did sign that thing that went around, so what does that mean?
It says that you are fine with us seeking businesses to make your business equipment for the school.
I thought you wanted a contribution.
Make a hefty donation.
No, ma'am, but I'll take anything you want to give.
And, um, the kids are precious, you're doing such a good job. And thank you for the book, I have a two-year-old to read it to, Louis will enjoy the book. And thank you, Katie, for the book, I will have more time to read in July, I certainly appreciate it. And I did want to comment that I voted against tabling the budget, because I felt certain that we would get the money. In fact, I'm sure we will get the money in the next few days, so I just have confidence in our General Assembly. Um, I know how they work. And, um, hopefully I will have time to do some reading in July, and I hope you all do, too. Thank you. And I wanted to welcome Dr. Davis, Darren Davis is here, new principal of Spring Valley. Stand up, she doesn't know him.
I voted for you, but I don't know who you are.
Thank you, Ms. Brill. Mr. Manning?
Uh, I want to thank everybody for allowing me to be part of this, uh, meeting, uh, from Brevard, North Carolina, where I am, uh, with my family on a, a small vacation, and, uh, appreciate the opportunity to be there. Dr. Davis, I can't see you, um, but glad to know that you're there. Uh, Mr. Jackson, thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman, thank you for, um, your leadership willingness to work with me as we, uh, go through, I think, the first ever Skype session for a board meeting. And, uh, I look forward to seeing you guys in person July 17th, if not before.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Ms. Specter?
I just want to say thank you, Denise, for having us, the school looks great, and I can't believe we've already been open a year. I mean, it seemed like I just toured it when the school opened, the first day of school. Um, the students were fantastic, um, the little boy that, what grade was he in?
Horizon Court.
Fourth, um, that did the prayer, he was very outspoken, so I can see him really excelling. And, um, just thank everybody for all your hard work, enjoy your summer, be safe, and we'll see some of you back in July.
Thank you, Ms. Specter. Dr. Fleming?
Just want to thank Denise for hosting tonight, and, uh, everyone here and your children, their students are well-mannered, articulate, and above average, as I say, Lake Wobegon, but we, um, I'm glad to be here. Also, um, it's this budget thing, I, Ms. Brill, are you sure you trust the legislature that much?
I do, they will find the money, because this is an election, this is an election year.
Well, I think they'll get something done, we just know when, I, I think they will too, and I, I honestly do. But, uh, I'm glad we have the iPad, uh, because I will be out of the country next week, so somebody needs to show you how to use this thing for the next, if y'all have a meeting next week. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Fleming. I certainly would like to echo the comments that have been made, and, and tell you, Ms. Barth, how much of a pleasure it is for us to be here and for me to be back again, such a beautiful school, and such a warm, inviting environment, in particular this room and just the way it's laid out, so. Thank all of you for being here tonight, thank you board members for, uh, the excellent job that you continue to do, thank our technology folk for allowing Mr. Manning to be a part of the meeting tonight, thank those, also, same folks and others for, um, allowing our board meeting tonight to be broadcast and, or recorded, rather, and will be aired later so that citizens in our community will be able to share in with, um, with us as we discuss those critical issues that involve our students. I, too, would also like to echo Ms. Brill's comment, Mrs. Brill's comments, and, and welcome, uh, Dr. Davis back, uh, back home, as I said, uh, in the newspaper, and certainly know that he's going to do a fantastic job, uh, over at Spring Valley High School. Thank all of you for being here tonight, and certainly have a safe summer as well, we look forward to seeing you back in August. Dr. Brochure?
Members of the board, I just want to reiterate some of the comments that, uh, Mr. Jackson, you made as we lost one of our students earlier, um, this week from Rice Creek Elementary, Aleah, uh, will certainly be missed, and I just want to extend to her family our deepest thoughts and prayers.
Thank you, Dr. Brochure. Senior cabinet members, any comments?
Uh, Mr. Jackson, I'd like to-
Yes, Ms. Mallett.
I'd like to say that Tyler Gadsen is the son of Stacy Gadsen, who is the Assistant Principal, and the two twins, um, their mother works here, too, so I thought I would mention that as well.
Very good, thank you very much. Hearing no further comments, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Mr. Chair, seconded.
Moved by Dr. Burgess, seconded by Ms. Brill. Thank you very much, have a nice evening, meeting adjourned.